I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klemkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Lefever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Cates?
We are very pleased to have some wonderful community partners with us tonight. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our associate superintendent for Student Services, Mark Kovak, who will help us introduce the partners that we have and celebrate this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. The district's special education programs often rely on community partnerships to support students' learning experiences in real-world settings, places where students can practice the everyday living skills that they will need as they transition from high school to adulthood. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize local businesses that provide worksite experiences for our students. Through these partners' generosity, compassion, and dedication, we are able to achieve success with our students each year. This year, 26 community businesses opened their doors to over 200 District 211 students eligible for special education services. In a few moments, you'll hear more about how these community partners work in tandem with our programming to support students, and it is with our deepest gratitude that we recognize them tonight. Please welcome Patrick Abraham, Transition Services Coordinator, and Rene Erickson, Director of Special Education, to the podium so they can introduce these valued organizations and their representatives.
Thank you, Dr. Cates, and our Board of Education for your continued support of our students at these amazing work experiences out in the community each day. And thank you to our business partners for all of your support in welcoming and opening your doors to our students every single day. It's been an amazing experience, and we can't do this without your support, so thank you. I'd like to first welcome, representing Elizabeth Blackwell School, from School District 54, Christina Dalton. From Friendship Village, Jocelyn Johnson. Representing Innovative Components, Tim Werman. From Lifetime Fitness, Justin Marquette. Representing the Rosewood Care Center, Kelly Nash. From the Village of Palatine, Mary May. And representing the Willow Creek Care Center, Ron Kessler. Thank you again. How about another round of applause for our community business partners?
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'll go ahead and take a short break to allow for some photographs, and then we'll continue with our business portion. Okay, we'll begin our business portion of the meeting with citizens' appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign the yellow sheet that would like to address the Board of Education? Okay, I do not see any, and at this time, I'll invite Nick and Judy Sinase up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Sinase, and I would like to take the opportunity to thank both District 211 and Innovative Components. The district work program taught me a great deal to help me achieve the goal of competitive employment. The job training from the coaches was very helpful, especially being able to observe someone do the task before I had to do it. Some of the things I was taught are writing down the steps to my job duties, how to problem-solve in the workplace, and how to have a conversation with coworkers. Some of the things I enjoy about my job are doing a variety of different clerical tasks, organizing filing paperwork, and sorting and delivering the mail when it is delivered. I would like to thank the school board, my teacher, Ms. Mack, my boss at Innovative Components, Christine, and the owner of Innovative Components, Mike O'Connor, for everything that they have done to help me be successful at work.
So, good evening. My name's Judy Sinase. I'm Nick's mom, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the school board, the staff, Tim, representing Innovative Components, for the opportunities that Nick has had. Just a little background, Nick has had many job opportunities through the district. He was at Conan, and he worked at Rosewood. I know there was a representative here from Rosewood. He was at IKEA. He was at, I wrote these down because I'll forget, Nordstrom Rack, Renaissance Hotel, and I think all of those opportunities led him to eventually be able to be as successful as he has been at Innovative Components. So, he started out as a, just a student with a job coach, and then second semester, he was what they call a student intern, and then the staff at New Endeavors, Ms. Mack, encouraged him to apply at Innovative for employment, which he did, and he's been there. I know Ms. Mack is going to talk a little bit more, but he's been there for about a year. And from what my husband and I can tell, and the feedback we get from staff like at Innovative, is he's successful. He's a productive member of their team over there, and Nick really does enjoy going to work. And so, I just wanted to come up here and say thank you to all of you, thank you to the staff, a big shout-out to Ms. Mack. I don't know if we could have done it without her. I mean, it's a tough transition going from high school, Conan, to the adult transition program, and she really was instrumental in helping us navigate all of the muddy waters, so to speak. So, a big shout-out to her and the rest of the staff. So, I just wanted to come up here and say thank you. And one last thing, we do need more worksites for these kids because they really are and can be really hard, dedicated workers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick and Judy. Okay, that'll bring us to our presentation. Dr. Cates?
I'm not sure that I could give any better introduction, honestly. So, we are very pleased tonight to share with you information about our transition services, and particularly through the Adult Transitions Program and the New Endeavors Program. Just for a bit of reference for the board, it was 10 years ago that we began the ATP program, and started out with an idea, and then we slowly grew it into some decrepit trailers, and now we have wonderful facilities and really opportunities that are life-changing. So, we are very pleased. The partnerships that we've grown over the years have really expanded, and the continuum is really the envy of many across the state, to be honest. And we are very appreciative to have with us tonight several of our experts to tell us about that and to help paint the picture for what it's like in our transition services. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Kovak.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. So, what a fantastic introduction to hear right from one of our students and his mother about his experiences in our programs. Tonight, we're welcomed, or I guess pleased to have some of our most dedicated special educators here to help describe the programs that Nick and his mother just shared with you and give you a little bit more insight about those through the stories of student experiences. I know that you have awareness of our transition programming, so we want to share with you through the eyes of the student what they have through those opportunities. So, I had an opportunity earlier to introduce Rene Erickson, our Director of Special Education. Wanted to make sure you know who else we have with us this evening. We have Pete Capra. Pete is a teacher in our adult transition program. And we also have Becca Macattoni, or Ms. Mack, as I now know you, from our New Endeavors Program. Renee?
Much of what we do in special education is governed by federal mandates and state regulations, and one of those mandates is the development of a transition plan designed to prepare students to lead independent, meaningful adult lives to the greatest degree possible. Transition plans vary greatly from student to student and really are guided by the individual student's abilities and interests. Transition planning is comprised of a planned series of steps, beginning with the student identifying areas of career interest, and school staff aligning those interests to individualized academic and elective courses of study. Additionally, students may be also recommended for one of two courses designed specifically to meet their transition needs: cooperative work training and community-based education. Cooperative work training focuses on the development of soft skills such as workplace communication and problem-solving, as well as hard skills or job-specific skills in preparation for participation in work experiences. Community-based education emphasizes the application of basic math, reading, and communication skills in varying settings. As we prepare students to reach their post-secondary goals, we provide opportunities for skill development in three levels of work experience, with each leading to increased development of both those soft and hard skills, as well as independence in the workplace. I want to share with you one of the experiences of one of our students, Julia. Upon meeting Julia, she expressed interest in working in retail and working with customers. As school staff got to know Julia, it was evident that her post-secondary interests were a natural fit to her personality. Our transition staff quickly got to work to tailor a plan individual to her. Julia started her work experience, supported by a job coach, at an in-district worksite, completing clerical tasks in the school's main office. It was through this experience that Julia developed the workplace soft skills of communicating with others in problem-solving. Julia then transitioned to the second level of work experience in the community, where she participated in multiple community-based experiences with the support of a job coach. At one of her supported worksites, Julia's interactions with customers were observed to be so impressive that her experience was expanded to include interacting with customers as a cashier. This supported Julia's development of job-specific skills. This was followed by the third level of work experience, the supported internship. Julia successfully participated in three internships with minimal job coach support and ever-increasing independence and confidence. One of those internships even grew to be a paid internship. So, what's really important to know about Julia is that Julia and her parents entered high school with hopes that one day she would gain competitive employment, but that hope and that excitement was also coupled with fear and a sense of unease, is that when she was younger, her family was told that the likelihood of Julia ever being employed, being able to develop those skills necessary for employment, that it probably wasn't going to happen. So, while they wanted this for their daughter, and she wanted it for herself, there was a great degree of uncertainty. So, I'm happy to report that today, Julia is not only competitively employed full-time as a cashier, but she is also training to be a front-end manager at a local big-box store. To me, Julia is the perfect example as to the impact transition planning and programming can have on our students. In addition to varied work experiences, we also offer two highly specialized transition programming opportunities: our adult transition programs and our New Endeavors Program. Here to tell you more about our adult transition programming is Pete Capra.
Thank you, Renee. The Adult Transition Program is proud to be in its 10th year of providing specific instruction and community-based experiences for 18- through 21-year-old students with intellectual disabilities. In ATP, we focus on developing students' self-determination skills so they can live as independently as possible, access community resources, and become fully participating members of society. Students participate in a variety of experiences that promote skill development in the areas of recreation and leisure, functional daily living skills, accessing and navigating their communities, and vocational experiences. Ultimately, the goal of ATP is for our students to seamlessly transition from high school into independent living. We encourage students to participate in healthy rec and leisure activities and to develop lifelong, healthy living habits. We do this by exposing students to a variety of opportunities such as accessing community-based fitness centers, nature centers, and public libraries. Additionally, connections are made with community-based special rec programs that offer activities that are age-appropriate, encourage the continued development of healthy living skills into adulthood. Developing functional daily living skills is a fundamental step toward independent adult living. To accomplish this, students participate in a wide range of household activities in the ATP house, such as meal preparation, which is more than just cooking. It involves the meal planning, the budgeting, preparing the grocery list, and shopping and paying for those items. Outside of the ATP house, students are immersed within their communities as they develop skills for independence. While in the community, students develop the soft skills needed for appropriate interactions within their communities. Students also rehearse the steps needed to access community resources, such as public transportation, the local township office, the post office, and various volunteer opportunities. The development of pre-vocational skills begins in the ATP house. Students receive instruction regarding readiness for work. For example, following a daily work routine schedule, making sure they have the proper uniform and proper grooming. This instruction prepares students for work experiences in the school environment and in the community. Within the school environment, students have the opportunity to participate in our coffee cart service, delivering mail, and assisting in the front office. Additionally, each student participates in a community-based work-training experience. We are fortunate to have many community business partners, which enable us to offer a wide range of experiences that are specific to an individual student's interests and abilities. I'd like to share a story about one of our ATP students, Patrick. Patrick was one of the first students in which we created an independent volunteer opportunity for, along with his work-training site. The volunteer opportunity was with Friendship Village twice a week, and then also again working at the Willow Creek Care Center. He was highly successful both at Friendship Village and at his work-training site, and because of his performance and these opportunities paired together, he was able to obtain volunteer positions at both locations upon his graduation from ATP. This wouldn't have been possible without the cooperation of our partnering businesses and organizations. His mom has shared how thankful she is for those opportunities and can't express enough how much she enjoys seeing her son so involved with her community. And now, here to tell you a little bit more about New Endeavors is Becca Macattoni.
Thanks, Pete. The New Endeavors Program at the Higgins Education Center has one class solely devoted to preparing students for the transition to adulthood. More specifically, students ages 18 through 21 who demonstrated behaviors and characteristics along the autism spectrum and who have previously completed their graduation requirements. We recognize that our students often struggle with social interactions, are often resistant to social settings, and tend to isolate themselves. As students develop skills in the area of appropriate recreation and leisure engagement, there is significant attention paid to teaching students to recognize socially appropriate activities. A strong emphasis is placed on developing the social skills necessary for interactions in those settings. Further, we strive to connect students with similar and appropriate interests within their communities. Most students in the transition class of New Endeavors have mastered basic independent living skills, such as preparing meals, developing and following daily schedules and routines, and setting and utilizing alarms and reminders. However, there are additional independent living skills that are critical in adulthood, which are further developed through instructional activities. These include applying for a job and preparing for an interview, identifying post-secondary housing options, budgeting and money management, healthcare and medication management, and personal hygiene and well-being care. Many New Endeavor students have knowledge of their immediate communities, such as their home address and well-known landmarks within their communities, such as the post office or pharmacy. However, this particular student population struggles with planning and independently carrying out trips to unfamiliar places. To address students' needs in this area, students plan trips in which they identify transportation options, make decisions regarding the efficiency and cost of those transportation options. As students demonstrate mastery in this progress, they apply for regional transit authority supports and engage in independent trip planning specific to their needs and local community. In developing career readiness skills, students participate in a daily work experience for half of the school day, which is either in building or in the community, with the goal that they will build the necessary workplace skills to participate in a supported internship and then eventually competitive employment. At each level of work experience, students work toward the continued development of workplace skills with increased independence. Additionally, students in the New Endeavors transition class have developed three businesses: the Higgins Education Center coaster business, Colonel Corner popcorn business, and the Higgins Education Center coffee cart. I am happy to share that we currently have 11 students who have successfully gained independent competitive employment. An exemplary example of post-secondary planning comes to mind of a student from New Endeavors transition, Nick. Nick started at one of our supported community work-training sites, Innovative Components, doing manufacturing tasks. Nick had shared with us his goal of working in a clerical setting, so the job coach, case manager, and transition coordinator facilitated an internship experience with the office side of Innovative Components business. Nick excelled with support from his family, a job coach, and his Division of Rehabilitation Services liaison until he was independent in the work setting. Innovative Components also noticed Nick's hard work and growth and offered him competitive employment as a clerical employee at their front desk. He has begun to take continuing education classes at Harper to enhance his knowledge of Microsoft products that he uses at his job. Additionally, Nick has mastered the skill of independently navigating and accessing public transportation options and Uber to and from his job.
In District 211, we afford students many opportunities to prepare for adult life. It is through the partnership between families and community-based adult agencies that our students experience successful transitions. Through these partnerships, specifically those with Community Alternatives Unlimited and the Division of Rehabilitation Services within the Illinois Department of Human Services, collaborative relationships between the student, family, school, and community agencies are developed long before the student exits high school. Additionally, District 211 co-hosts the Directions College and Career Fair and the Future Begins Today event to connect students and families to post-secondary education and training opportunities and supports. It is through these relationships that many of our students with special needs leave with linkages to adult services and supports, bringing a degree of reassurance and relief to their families.
On the screen, you can see just a few highlights that detail the student outcomes related to the programs that were just described and the impact they have on student readiness. Each one of these connects back to our community business partners that we recognize this evening. Over the last 18 months, nearly 15% of the students who participated in a district-sponsored work experience have been hired for competitive employment by our community business partners. 85% of our ATP students leave the district with established connections to community-based adult resources, services, or employment opportunities. And finally, the district has been recognized by the state of Illinois in each of the last eight years for its outcomes regarding students with disabilities and their connection to these services. And as a result of that recognition, the district has received increasing grant funding from the state to continue the support of those programs. Each one of these outcomes is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our staff and the strength of our partnerships with these community business leaders. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
It's fantastic. I think it's wonderful, and you know, the students are so caring, and they want to be out there, and they want to participate, and the opportunities that the staff and our community provides is just tremendous. Thank you.
Quick question. How does the program handle students where their expectations or their identified careers don't necessarily align with their skill sets? How do you handle it?
Quite honestly, that's not uncommon. But we really try to meet in the middle and say, so what is it, you know, what is it about, what you're expressing is your career interest, what is it about that career that interests you? And it's like, okay, well, look, you could do that here and there, and oftentimes, the student will be like, oh, I never thought of that, like, I want to try that. And I would say that another key piece to our transition programming is exposure. So, you know, you might come in with, you know, one thought, and we want to create opportunities and kind of expand that thinking.
I would add that I think the term "career cluster" is helpful as opposed to "career." Students sometime are very focused on individual destinations as opposed to a collective where there are many different specialties, and within that group, there undoubtedly is something that is more aligned with the particular pursuit that that student can follow.
I've had the opportunity early on, when I first got on the board, to go out and visit, thank you for the tour, the Higgins Center, the Higgins Education Center, and to see the young people. And I also have some friends and family, associates out in the community who have been able to take advantage, some of my neighbors and such. So, I'm really, really proud that we have such a program here in our community. And thanks to both our business partnerships and especially the internal staff that really helped these students learn how to live in their daily lives, not just in the workplace, but in their everyday life and things that maybe those of us that don't have those challenges take for granted. So, I commend you all so very much on everything that you do.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. It was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
...to exit quietly.
Sure.
I've actually been there, too.
But they can leave.
We're good like that. Okay, this will bring us to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Can I request that 4I be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Which one? I'm sorry?
4I personnel recommendations?
The motion's already on the floor. Can you?
We can amend it.
Or you can ask your questions to see if it even needs to be amended.
I can ask my question.
You can always ask your question, yeah.
Okay. So, in 4I personnel recommendations, I'm just curious as to why we're being asked to accept personnel recommendations for, for instance, for things that have taken place prior to even our last board meeting, such as new hire recommendations in January and resignation from December? Why we're being asked to accept those recommendations in February?
I'm not, Kathy, I'm not sure if you can give us a little bit of guidance on that.
The ones, the hires, like for January? Board report? Of the... The one that's on there from December, you did not receive word from that employee? They put out a note, but they weren't on the list? They put out a note, but they weren't on the lead? Not quite as big one, not during the time.
So, that was kind of retroactive lead too. Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other questions within the consent agenda? Roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hincha?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
We brings us to our special reports. We have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions or comments? Our class size committee report. Questions or comments? 2019-2020 budgeting sequence and development. Questions, comments?
For that sequence, is there a designated timeframe for when we're going to readdress the IMRF? I know that that was highlighted as something that we should revisit.
Yes, so the document that we have presented so far is just an outline of some of the considerations that we would have. We would have several Budget and Finance Committee meetings where we would address those exact items. And certainly, the IMRF is one of those items that I know the board is interested in reviewing and considering.
Right, so we see that at June, which is near the end of the fiscal year. Is that when we're going to visit it? Or is there some proactive discussion that we'll be looking at prior to June?
Sure, if you're looking for the specifics, our next Budget and Finance Committee meeting is the first Wednesday in March. And then I'll let Lauren respond to any particulars in terms of the sequencing.
We will also have one in April. The piece of information that we would be looking for in order to further our discussion on the IMRF advancement is the final rate and information that would pertain specifically to the district, and that will not be available until April. So, it would be sometime after that to when we could bring the board better information regarding our current position.
We do try to sequence the whole multiple-month run-up to the budget across multiple Budget and Finance meetings and board meetings. So, we have broken it down into separate funds so that the focus can be on a consumable amount of information at one time. So, the Budget and Finance meetings we have planned are on April 6th, and then I think it is on March 6th, and then April 17 are the next dates. And then we have one that's likely in June as well, so that you can have coverage of numerous items, among them which will be the IMRF. I know that has interest from several people.
May I ask a question? I agree with the IMRF. I think we need to be talking about that. When you present that to us, I know we've talked about, you know, of $2 million going towards it. Will you give us some estimates of maybe like if it's $1 million, what kind of cost savings that would be? And if we didn't do anything, you know, where does that stand? So, kind of give us some ideas.
Yeah, various permutations. You'll have a chance to vet each of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to our new business, the Property Tax Relief Grant. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution which authorizes the abatement of the 2018 taxes levied by Township High School District 211 by $1,965,445 and file the resolution with the Cook County Clerk before March 29, 2019, consistent with the requirements of the Property Tax Relief Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And just so that we're clear, this $2 million is just for this year, then the taxpayer's responsible for the $2 million plus the levy increase next year, correct?
The shortest answer is yes, that is true today. We are working on some options that would provide the potential for additional relief. But as the law exists today and as the resolution stands before you, that is correct.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hincha?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Next, we have our revised school calendars for 2019-2020 and 2020-2021, proposed school calendars for 2021-2022, 2022-2023, and 2023-2024, and proposed summer school calendar for 2022, 2023, and 2024. Like to take this in three suggested motions. The first suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the revised school calendar for the 2019-2020 school year and 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Real quick, I've had the opportunity, because something that's been important to me since I've been on the board is to make sure that our school calendars don't conflict with the diverse population of our student and staff. And I once again commend the school district for these proposals. I did have an opportunity to kind of peruse through them and compare them to different calendars and the like. And there are, from what I can see, at least at the basic school calendar, no conflicts that I can tell. So, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the proposed school calendar for the 2021-2022, 2022-2023, and 2023-2024 school years as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the proposed summer school calendar for 2022, 2023, and 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have our proposed policy revision for the school calendar. This is for your review. Are there any questions or comments? There's two of them, I'm sorry. We have sale of surplus school properties. Suggested motion is that the Board of Education authorize the sale of used surplus vehicles in a piano by way of public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a preference of one of the three, or is there a reason that we're keeping these three options open?
The, our plan is to start with all of them to be sold via public bid. However, if they are not sold public bid, we would go to a public auction site or a trade-in for those to whichever we can feel we would get the greatest value. But with all of the items, we would start via public bid.
So, there's no identified new fleet vehicles that the trade-in would be beneficial towards where we're looking for new utility trucks or service vans or something like that? And it would make sense to maximize the value that route?
You're talking about like on a trade-in or something?
Well, I was just wondering if you're looking to do, you know, fleet vehicles, whether it be pickup trucks or whatever we're using, if there was any scheduled identified need there. You know, I was just wondering if the timing, I understand the purpose, I just was, the question is to the timing, if there was anything else going on that you would be able to use the trade-in?
No, we're just really trying to reap whatever cash benefit we can receive, frankly, to, you know, for vehicles that are beyond the lifecycle, yeah.
We would feel that the public bid process would bring a greater value than a trade-in on a potentially another car should we have the need to purchase something else for our fleet.
Yeah. And we hope to do this in the spring, as I mentioned to you in an earlier message this week, so that the, you know, viewability of them is a little more accessible and people have a chance to see them, to help get a little bit more interest as well.
Roll call, please. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever? Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Hincha?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Board member expenses. Suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursements for Stephen Rosenbloom to attend the IASB North Cook Division Dinner Meeting on March 20, 2019, and Anna Klimkowitz to attend the NSBA National Conference in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania from March 29 to April 1, 2019 as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Hincha?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any potential topics for future agendas?
I thought we were going to talk about our process of negotiation. Is that something that we still want to do? Or do we want to put it on the agenda for next month? Or do we want to delay it?
I'm up for putting it on the agenda for next month. I think since we voted last month that now that we have, I'm comfortable with bringing it back for review.
Because I thought at the end of our meeting, we had said, yeah, that we kind of need to take a look at it and look at our process a little bit and how we did things and maybe provide a little more information to the community of the entire process.
Is anyone opposed to bringing it in next month to review the process of negotiations? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Thank you.
Do we have a certain amount of time we're going to allocate to doing that?
We certainly could make a suggestion, sure.
10 minutes.
I think we might need a little more than 10 minutes, Mr. LeFever.
Can we go with 20?
Done.
I, I...
And maybe if we need to, you know, if the discussion warrants it, we probably should be able to keep it open. But I can't see us longer than maybe a half an hour. 20 minutes might be. I don't know.
I don't even know if I want to limit it to just next month. But there may be items or topics that come up that need some further investigation or review or gathering of information to then bring back to the board and have some more discussion on. I don't, I don't want to necessarily limit ourselves because it's a really important topic. But at the same time, I don't want to devote hours and hours in the evening to be discussing it, so.
We're not really going to go through that process for at least four years?
Right, but I think we...
We don't want to do a recap now, so...
I'd be in favor of an ad hoc committee or just a separate committee to analyze this to save Mr. LeFever the pain and suffering of having to discuss things that he's not really interested in for more than 10 minutes. If we want to set up a committee of board members and maybe hash it out there, that might be a better idea.
I, I don't, I disagree. Yeah, I disagree too. I think it's a process that the seven of us went through. I think it's a valuable process in order, although it may not go happen for another three to four years, Mr. LeFever, I do feel that good, solid, accurate notes and feedback to the community is of value in the close to a relative timeframe that it happened. I think that documentation piece is good. What I would offer up as an idea is maybe that we, we try to stay within the framework of 20 to 30 minutes, and if we cannot accomplish it, that's when we table it and move it on to the next agenda that sees fit for that. I would also suggest that board members that have strong perspectives and viewpoints on specifics, that they could maybe get them to Dr. Cates, maybe that Friday prior to our board meeting, so he can compile everything so that we can all be on the same page to avoid a lot of conversation that we could have solved with information that we could have ahead of time. Does that seem reasonable and fair?
Yeah, and I think as we look at it, my thought and from our prior conversations is we kind of need to just look at the process and maybe not exactly at some of the specifics that had occurred, but just looking at the process and how we go about doing it, what we've learned from it, and maybe how things can be better, you know, going forward. That's my thought on it.
Is someone going to kind of administer the whole thing, like exactly what the purpose is, the agenda for that conversation? And I'll re-ask the length of time, how long we intend to spend? It still seems a little open-ended if you're going to do one meeting and then continue on in the next meeting. I mean, usually the superintendent presents us with stuff that would be like we're here to conduct business. Here is the business before us. And at the end, we have an outcome or something that we vote on. That's not going to be an outcome of this process. So, it's just going to kind of be, you know, who's going to manage that conversation and corral the outcome so that the board in the future can presumably benefit from the conversation?
I guess I would see our president as, you know, corralling the group here. And I would see our superintendent maybe making some notes as Dr. Cates generally does of our discussions here. I think you're correct that there's probably not going to be, there may not be something specific, and there might be something that may come up that we do want to have as a future topic, you know, for the following month or maybe a couple of months down the road. I don't know until we have that conversation next month. So, I guess I would like to keep it open a little bit, but I do agree with the timeframe. We should be able to bring information forward within, you know, 20 minutes, 30 minutes at the most. I think it's important to debrief what transpired.
I think a general outline, Mr. LeFever, that could help facilitate that conversation by people submitting in their topics. And then, as Dr. Cates has done, if you are okay with this, is to distill those into those, into a nice outline like you do with when you get multiple board questions on other topics, and it hones it in. And then we can follow that document as our guide of discussion.
I think that'll be helpful if Dr. Cates understands generally what we're trying to do. If we could get something like normal stuff that you bring to...
Right, yes. We have a series of weeks between here and there, and I'll be able to collect some ideas and information. I think start to distill that. I think that's a good description of categorizing topics for discussion.
And like, I would imagine as you do, if you do not have enough information or too much, you'll just come back to us as a group and just keep filtering through?
I think that would be effective, yes.
Okay. Thank you for the extra. Thank you. That brings us to our committee reports. Mrs. Klimkowitz with NSSCO?
All right. In regards to NSSCO, we had a fantastic presentation on the spotlight on the shining star. It was a fifth-grade student from Westgate Elementary from the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. So, she did a lovely presentation about what the student has experienced and how the students are working forward to achieve their goals of participating in independence and of, you know, their planning as they're going forward. We also had a presentation on the student outcomes from the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. From Hersi High School, they have, the deaf students are involved in the media productions. And they showed us a short film clip of what the students are doing, which is absolutely tremendous. So, they're integrating with their peers and, you know, each is learning about one another and how to best to communicate. So, it was very good. This is, as you know, this is NSSCO's 50th anniversary. So, it's been around for 50 years. Things have changed, things have grown, things have developed. And Dr. Hackett has been working with her staff to see how do we go forward? How do we make some necessary changes to meet the goals and meet the needs of the students? And a change that they are suggesting, I've given you a handout on it and kind of summarizes everything, and it's going to be a huge, major change. And it will begin with the 2019-2020 school year. Kirk Campus would then be serving high school students through their transition years of age 22, and Minor School would be the early childhood going through grade eight. So, this is quite a change. It appears that it would be very good for District 211 because our kids are not going to have to travel as far...
as far. Kirk School is closer for us. Uh, transitional services are, are right there, and instead of having it at two locations, it's, it's at one. Um, Dr. Hackett gave a very good presentation to the board, to the, um, uh, to the district representatives, um, to the parents, to a whole variety of people. So she's, she's been out there letting people know about it and giving some specifics. Of course, you've got some parents that are, that are concerned because this is gonna be a major change. Um, she's assured them that we're gonna work through it. A lot of the TAs are gonna go along with, uh, their students. Uh, the teachers are probably, most of them are willing to, to switch to going to a different school. Um, there's also gonna be, there will always be some kind of, you know, resistance to change, but the way it looks right now, I think things are, are moving forward, um, and it's, it's rolling ahead. So, uh, maybe Dr. Cates can add something to it?
Sure, and again, it is, uh, does allow for a year of transition in between here and there, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion among, uh, the various constituent groups, and we do think that the consolidation of the services are going to be, uh, very helpful on, uh, matters of efficiency. Uh, when you have, uh, you know, kindergarten students through twelfth grade in two different locations, it just, you know, it, it lends itself to a number of, uh, challenges that we think are gonna, uh, improve programming and efficiency on, on both fronts. So we're very pleased to see the vision take shape, and I know that they have a, uh, a lot of work that they're doing between here and there to help communicate the progress as they go along.
And, and Dr. Hackett always, you know, solicits input. Uh, parents are very involved. It's very important, uh, as they move forward. And we have, you know, the marvelous presentation here for the adult transition. So, you know, all of those factor into, to helping these students. So that's, that's really good. And there's also, um, uh, well, they call it the transition time. So there's a, uh, a little newsletter that goes out in regards to the transition specialist teams and the, uh, Division of Rehabilitation Services. Uh, it gives them information on campus planning, how to select schools, just a variety of things to help the parents and help our young people, um, as they transition out. So it's a lot of changes that are gonna be taking place, so exciting things that are moving into the next fifty years.
Just a quick question. I'm, I'm not as aware, um, familiar or as in-depth as, as either of you are. Are there any specific, um, uh, facility-based items that may have directed a student to Kirk over minor or vice versa that will need to be then duplicated at the other campus?
The only, uh, notable difference in the facilities is a pool. And so, uh, you know, there is, everyone would be interested to have a pool, and, uh, so there have been, uh, that's the one item that has cropped up. Uh, and so, uh, they are finding creative solutions for ways that they can, uh, avail, uh, you know, that kind of opportunity for kids coming over from minor to Kirk, or, uh, other community resources that are local.
Cause I know we put a gym in one of the schools recently, correct, and then we've been working on the walking path at another, you know, so just wondering if there's, you know, i- if it's comparable, then it's a wash, no issue, but if they're relocating for one reason or another, cause now the funding will be separated. We'll obviously be funding one facility versus, you know, let's say fifty-four and fifteen, which will be funding the other facility. And I'm just, my only concern would be that maybe the deeper pockets are being allocated to a facility that may need more improvements than the other, or something along those lines, but.
Sure. So there's a extensive formula that they use for the facility improvements, and so, uh, just to point a clarification, neither fifteen or fifty-four belong to NSSCO.
Sorry, I was just referring to a K through-
But it is the elementary districts. You, you are right about that. It is the elementary districts, and to that, uh, degree, since the, the, all of the elementary districts involved in the NSSCO are on the east side, they will actually have lesser transportation, you know, to get to minor school, and then ours, you know, would be similarly here with they're all on, on our side, Kirk School being on, you know, the District 211 boundaries. Otherwise, the facilities, uh, we think are gonna be mutually, uh, able to serve. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
There, there might be some movement of some of the furniture or, you know, purchases of some things that, uh, may be required for certain students, so, but other than that, it should be, uh, probably minimal cost, though, so.
Could I also ask just a quick question, not necessarily specific to Mrs. Klimkowitz's report, but just briefly, you, you mentioned the transition services that are provided by NSSCO. Can you, what are the, what's the difference between their service and the transition services that we heard about in District 19?
Same, uh, general nature. Each student has their own transition plan. It would be then just the, uh, immediacy, uh, locale of the students, and then the, the skill range is also a little bit adjusted. So, uh, we have some, uh, very complex students that are served by the cooperative, and, uh, they're a bit beyond our range of services. So they are able to consolidate their expertise, and, uh, actually, our building serves as a work site for some of the students from Kirk School.
Okay, thank you.
That's it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski, EdRed?
EdRed was, uh, rescheduled to last Friday. I had a conflict, so I wasn't able to attend, but I'll defer to someone. I believe she attended. Go ahead.
Several items that are happening right now and that were discussed at the last EdRed meeting. Um, there was follow-up on the, uh, dinner, the EdRed dinner from January, just discussing the formation of an ad hoc committee to discuss mandates. So I know they are progressing with the planning on that. Um, discussion on Senate Bill 28, House Bill 247, um, which would allow some flexibility and exemption from the, um, requirements, the five-hour clock retirem-, excuse me, requirements, uh, for students if they are enrolled in other types of programming. So there was some, um, continued discussion surrounding that topic. Uh, a couple bills that are out regarding some property tax freeze alternatives that would, um, be determined relative to a district's fund balance. And, um, some, quite a bit of discussion surrounding pension shift bills that are out there, and some, um, different means by which they are tying that back into, um, a district's tier, uh, of their evidence-based funding. And the final topic of discussion was regarding the minimum wage bill that is out, um, that would set a minimum wage of fifteen dollars, um, by 2025, and I know there was some advancement on that, I believe just today, yesterday or today. So, um, those were the, the primary areas of focus. There was also an attorney, um, from a, excuse me, a local law firm who, um, had some, uh, presentation specifically around, uh, the, um, reporting requirements for, uh, sexual abuse that may happen in school, and just provided an update because there are several, I think she cited about a dozen bills that are, uh, currently in place surrounding that topic. So, a lot of things happening.
Before we move off of EdRed, um, I'd like to add that, um, EdRed had its forty-eighth annual legislative dinner, um, last, late last month, and, um, Mrs. Klimkowitz and I, as well as Dr. Cates, attended, uh, the dinner, and I wanted to give an update on that, um, as part of the EdRed, uh, report. Um, it was a wonderful evening, first of all. It was very well attended on a very dreary, snowy, ho- uh, horrible weather day. Um, Dr. Colleen, uh, Kachetti from, um, from Ann and Robert Lurie Children's Hospital, um, spoke on, um, mental health and the crisis and the impact that it has on various aspects of student life, um, from, um, increased likelihood of problems with chronic absenteeism, uh, behavioral issues, and academic performance. Uh, she gave a lot of data. Um, it was very, very interesting, and, um, and she really shared, um, some of her personal perspective of experience, um, at the hospital with, uh, with dealing with young people who have these, uh, these mental health issues. And, uh, there was also a panel of school administrators and state legislators who spoke about, um, about this subject, as well as answering questions related to, uh, other legislative proposals that are impacting our school district and the area. It was a great evening, very, very informative, and, uh, if anybody else on the board would like more information on that, I know Anna has, uh, Anna and I both walked away with some, uh, some information that we were able to gather, and the slide presentation is available online for us as well. So, uh, that's my portion. Anna, would you like to add anything?
Just a little bit. Um, with, uh, Dr. Kachetti talking about it, she also talked about ACEs, the adverse childhood experiences, and some of the things that, that children face, um, you know, from, uh, acute stress, acute trauma, and how the kids deal with it, and some of the things we talked about last month from that one workshop that I had gone to where I gave you some information about it. Um, she also touched on resilience, that, um, because children face certain trauma, uh, some of them are more resilient than others, and we have to really be able to, to kind of take a look at it and work with the kids. And again, um, it was that question, instead of asking, what are you doing, um, it should be, why are you doing it? We, excuse me, it's ask, what are you doing? Why are you doing it, and what should you be doing? So really taking a look at not what's wrong with the child, but what happened to the child. And she kind of, you know, expanded on that a little bit, where the teachers need to be cognitive of it and working with, um, uh, consular, social workers, and, and being able to, to help the kids along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parent connections. Mr. Dombrowski?
Uh, yeah, it was a sparsely attended meeting. Um, we had maybe a half a dozen parents. Um, it, uh, it went over our communications during negotiations and, most recently, with, uh, weather-related communications, and, uh, uh, for the most part, the feedback, um, was positive, I think, on both. Um, really wasn't, uh, too much that we were looking at, uh, needing to improve on. Everybody is very adamant that our Twitter feeds are beyond excellent. I think that's what I came away with at that, uh, meeting, so.
Hashtag 211. Thank you. Okay, we have some announcements for your review, and that'll bring us to entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education, whoops.
Could I add to, before we do that, um, go back to announcements for just a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so I know that, uh, there are some upcoming events that are, are listed here in our, in our agenda. There's one that's, uh, not on here that I did want to make mention of, and that is that the Varsity Girls Bowling Team from Schaumburg High School is competing this weekend in the state finals in Rockford, and I wanted to, um, to make mention of that here at our board meeting, wish them absolutely the very best, um, as they compete this weekend, and, uh, and congratulations to them to get to the state finals, um, and represent our school district.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the suggested motion that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to individual student probable or im- imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Acceptance of retirement requests, the suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Diane Telchow, Telchow, previously approved by the Board of Education, April 26th, 2018, effective May 2019, instead of May 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Administrative appointments, suggested motion that effective July 1, 2019, Kirk McNiter be appointed a ten-month assistant principal at Schaumburg High School at a gross salary of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that John Paulman begin his duties as director of facilities and purchasing for a period up to thirty days of employment prior to his starting date of July 1, 2019, at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz, aye. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recap? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.